Seven oh one, we call the meeting to order. There's no additions to the agenda and I can mostly accept it as prepared. Okay, on our favor? Period. Uh, confirmation of October twenty-sixth council organizational meeting minutes and October twenty-seventh council meeting minutes. Any errors or omissions or not, you can accept those.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, on our favor? Take those probably. Okay, uh, delegation, first delegation is the gifting of something.
That's me.
Yay.
Good evening. So, we are here this evening to give the grand prize to our winner in the Shop local term.
Yay.
Um, just to give you some background, it was launched in July and closed October the first. It was intended to encourage residents to continue to shop local throughout the downtown project. We tried to make it as simple as possible, so residents collected receipts for businesses along Radeway Street and Lee's Side Streets and brought them with the town office to claim the prize. Um, some of the prizes we had were water bottles with a Bluetooth speaker attached, notebooks, T-shirts, cafe mugs, travel mugs. Um, there were three different prize levels, for ten dollars and under, eleven dollars to twenty-five dollars, and twenty-six dollars and over. And we also allowed a way, or figured out a way to allow the library and the other, the two banks to participate because people weren't obviously going in there to shop, we figured something out. There was also a level just for the little kids and those going in and out of maximum that they had to collect to come in and play with their T-shirts wearing bucket and shovel. It's very cute. There were a total sixty-seven prizes given out. And then thirty-nine people entered to win the grand prize of a TV. And the reason the numbers don't match up is because you could come back more than once, you could only enter each category once, but you could do all three levels, but you won't be entered into the grand prize once. So we used a random number to generate your ticket card winner. I don't know if anyone's here this evening, her name is Heather, she's up there.
Oh, I'm up there.
Thank you for being here.
Congratulations, Heather, that's exciting.
Yeah. Well, I definitely have a spot I'm thinking about.
Just wait, I'm gonna get my shit results.
Oh, great. Yeah.
I just need to grab a picture. You both have a key in there. Just have to stay your seat to be in part.
It's almost ending.
No, never mind your challenge. So, thanks for participating.
Thank you so much, this is one town project I was excited to get. This is called the Oma.
Yeah.
Do we have?
I'm gonna help her.
I'm always a great old time.
Congratulations and thank you for coming. Wonderful work.
Yeah, thanks so much. Thank you. Oh, careful.
Thanks again for coming.
Thank you.
Okay, and we have our second delegation in the back, you wanna cut the off, friend? We've got Eden Kieran in here, uh, listed on the agenda.
Yay.
Take it away, team. Mr. Kieran, I hope you made more than one of those. We did. Eight parkways streets up. First of all, there was a sale when people wanted to buy. And then we ended up with a whole bunch of them left, and they thought it would work well up there. And so we gave them the leftover. Yeah, no kidding.
You guys want to go to welders now, probably.
So who is the spokesperson?
So bad.
Okay.
So, this is our complete project, we have all nine of them ready, they're ready to go on the ground. We were hoping we'd get them in before it froze, but we were a little too late. We're hoping we could get one or all of you guys to walk it with us. Just so you guys know the course outline and how it's gonna work.
Do I have to ask a question?
Sure, of course.
Mitchell, where is the course at?
Vengeance Park.
Vengeance Park, okay. And when would you mind to do the, uh, walk around? If, if you wouldn't do it?
Well, we'd like to get it done before it snows again.
More like.
As soon as possible before it snows, or we could do it about this, no mugs. We've already measured everything out and placed our axes before, just to kind of see what it'd look like. But we wanna go through with the council and get approval of the course.
Um, and, and do you have your holes stuck already? Like, I'm supposing you're cementing those in.
Uh, no, we haven't, we're gonna need approval first and then take the holes and then throw them cats.
Um, Ken, has, uh, our Parks Department go with them? Like, do they have to wait for our approval to, to do their work?
Pretty much, they have already sort of set up the department as well.
Yeah, like, I mean, if they know where they wanna go, like, our parks people could go up there. Not to say we don't want it, because we will, but, you know, in the interest of getting it installed.
We're working with Kimber, make sure.
Yeah. Because that should be just.
It's not that hard, you can drive the cylinder to the ground.
Yeah, they're, these are easiest part, there's a pitch, there's a throwing, um, there's a four-by-eight area where the course has like your tee-off. So that helps with place as well, so that's, it's not big, it doesn't need to be dug down, just a little bit of gravel placed. We made a frame that holds the gravel in, and that's your tee-off box, as I say. So that's a little bit more substantial, but not really for digging, it's just placement.
Yeah, how much, how, how deep do you have to, to put those?
I did twenty-four inches.
They, they, they go down twenty-four inches?
Yeah, there's here, regulation, that's thirty-two.
So, Ken, Ken, is that site open properly located?
Yeah, that's all, that's all.
Well, that's what we're just talking about, yes, we're there wanting to put them, you know?
But we'll coordinate it.
Yeah.
We'll coordinate with Kimber, John, I'll let.
Uh, Mr. Bergrath, like, if they wanna get this done, it'd be kind of nice with them, you, you finish all your, so it's, it's ready to go in, right?
Yeah, we'll coordinate that, I'll get, I'll get, I'll get Kimber to do the score.
And, and how are you guys scheduling for school time, like, to get it done? Because I wonder, you're helping out at, uh, the Christmas market too, right? Is that you guys, or is that a different?
Uh, that's us.
Yeah, so.
You only got two days. And are we, are we able to get, like, if maybe we can supply it wherever, like, all first we get like a sign, then it shows the layout of the course. Or do you guys have something like that?
We, we were planning on getting little scorecards made.
Yeah.
That maybe local businesses could have, and little plaques to show the hole.
Okay.
And.
We could have Christina help.
They're gonna go on these posts.
Yeah.
Maybe we can get like.
Christina, be mindful, she's our, our communication person, so she can help get, uh, you know, a little map and stuff put out there for people as well. Like, I'd really like to see you guys be able to finish the project, and I mean, by November, lots of years you wouldn't be even thinking of putting anything in there.
Three feet of snow.
I know, right, but it'd be nice to get it completed. Um, Mark, do you have any idea, like, if, if Kimber goes out with these guys tomorrow, just, just random? Um, so to dig the pits and, and get those buried and get them cemented in and everything else, do you have a estimate of time?
Yeah, it'll take it, probably a day, day and a half.
They're gonna have to.
I think it's all together. All in, in this one, and just some gravel, like, I mean, that's the part we need, it's just that lower, the smaller, just the dump gravel. It's a two-by-six pressure tube frame, they just go down the dirt a little bit and then just pour some gravel.
And do we have the frames to put in?
Yeah, they're all there.
Oh, thank you.
So it's literally dig a hole, cement these in.
It's more than hard.
In our location, we mapped out, and we have drawn all of each location. In fact, we've actually placed it on the ground, marked with a spray paint before the snow came.
So really?
Still there, in it.
Just looking for approval, a little help from the town and some gravel?
Yeah, we wanna make sure that the location where we walked is okay with everybody, because before we're not, we're not just placing them anywhere.
And do you have any reason for concern?
No, uh, the boys chose areas that is very low impact to everything, we stayed away from the, the fog and wind.
Yeah.
So there's no interference of anybody hitting that. And we didn't go too close at all towards the residents, so there's no road, brisbe. It's mostly anything with all the older trees and the new trees. And, and we stayed away from the delicate trees, that's your, um, mountain ash and apple trees, we didn't hit that area. We're mostly in the spruce and the aspen trees department. So it's, it's not gonna be too interfering much, but we just really like to say, yeah, you know, thumbs up, we're good to go.
Because I think.
I think we make a motion to.
That they just go ahead.
To go ahead with, with, uh, any concerns that the administration has.
And, and, I don't even, yeah, I don't even know that we need a motion, because you guys have all the motions in place to put it in.
Very close to it.
Yeah, and, and, and I mean, it's the only reason, and, and again, not that we don't want to walk it, in the interest of getting it in. If you guys can meet with Kimber and Ken step that up for tomorrow.
Sure, sure.
Um, and.
I think that's what we started.
Yeah.
Well, until you've got more free time, you're not.
I do. So, I'm gonna have to.
We'll see you at noon.
Yeah, or good for you. Yeah.
Okay, cool, we'll see you at noon, I'll have my people here.
Sure, you want us here?
Yeah, me right here, or we can reach out there, whatever you prefer, why don't we reach out there, that's where they're going. Okay, I'll send Paul in here, just to hold it there.
Right, and then, um, we can walk it with Kimber, and then when they're ready to go to dig, then we can bring the units, so.
Perfect.
Yeah, because, and, because if you wanna hold you up, I don't think anybody around here wants to hold you up.
No.
Right, yeah.
Yeah.
But what I would like to see though, Ken, maybe if you could make arrangements with Chris and Christina, it would be nice that the paper came out and showed a picture of the boys setting up and recognizing their car.
Yeah, yeah. Excellent work, you guys, and did you get to use quite a few of the, um, street signs?
Um, yeah, we used one on every hole, just to mark the starting and.
Perfect. That was an excellent use of those old signs.
Yeah.
Yeah, you worked that good. Yeah.
Looks really good, you guys, you did excellent job.
Yeah, really great, thanks for allowing us.
Thank you for getting them.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Christina, do you wanna take a picture of them while they're here with?
I would, yeah.
Oh.
Well, good work, boys.
Excellent.
I think it's, it's just as important to do the project, but, you know, the, the commitment you guys have, have, uh, you know, is, is, you know, young, upcoming citizens of the town, have committed to our town.
You'll see it that often, it's good to see.
Yeah, it's great.
Because you guys have been working at this for quite a while.
Yeah.
Yeah, and of course, with hope that this year everything kind of ground to a halt too, right, so.
I did, yeah. Two years ago, but four-H group since COVID, and we hadn't stopped program for since January. So really, we had a delay, and even to finish it before summer, so that's, we would have done it earlier.
Yeah.
I'm sure there's gonna be a lot of people gonna enjoy that.
I'm sure.
It's year-round, this is a year-round sport.
Yeah.
Just have to use some sort of authority, frisbe, too.
All right, excellent, yeah, anything else you wanna share with us? No? Super, well, you did great job, guys, and, and I can't wait to go up there and take a walk through and see, do you know what up?
Yes, council versus four-H.
It's just, it's just best for speaker.
Anyways, all right, thank you very much, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Okay.
Have fun, guys. Nobody's gonna write that, please do everything.
Somebody could get a tail. All right, under actions and decisions, twenty-twenty-three, member and state Crossfield Legion is requesting the donation, we do this every year. Normally, it's for the length of the reef, of course, this year it's not a public service, but, um, for people to attend from the community. But they're still asking for a donation, I think that's a reasonable request. So somebody wanna make a motion that we do that?
We'll make that motion.
Okay, on our favor? That's curious. Okay, business arising, um, don't have much to report, but I do have a question, Ken, and this is kind of a, um, probably Parks Recreation as well. Do we have a memorial bench policy, like, for who gets their names on the benches around town? Like, how do people apply for that? Who do they apply to? What's the cost?
Yeah.
Is there preference given to local people? How, because some of the benches have names, but I don't know how that, how, how we determine who it is, or how they do that.
Um, I can speak to the ones at Squash Mar, um, those were actually purchased, um, by the Terry Gullman family.
Right.
So that's why they're there, that was a donation that was made by the families there. And majority of the time, if anybody wants a bench, donated their name for a bench.
Okay.
So that's the policy.
How much is that?
I've written them down, but that's the policy that we use right now.
So they would apply to the town office, and then we have the cost of the bench, and then for the price of that bench, they get a thing on there with their name. And do, is there any preference given to people local, or does it matter, just whoever asks?
If somebody's interested, they just contact out with the operations department and people, and so the benches are all the same, through the community.
Yeah.
They pay for it.
So if somebody wants to buy a memorial bench, can they say where it goes, or we just, we determine where it goes?
I guess it could be a combination of the, depending upon, you know, maintenance and everything, because depending upon what they have, they have a purpose rent, you know, based down on the market, so.
And do we have an actual policy for it, or that's just kind of, maybe we should have a policy for it?
I agree, and, um, we fit that also too, maybe we'll get what, who pays for maintenance on the bench, replacement of the bench.
That's right.
Right.
Yeah. Because I think it's, it's a really good idea, maybe, to do it, like, before we start putting benches along Radeway Street? Because I, I know that there's an intent to put them there, and I would suspect that if we've got a good policy, I would think that there would be families lined up to, to buy those benches, in which case that would, you know, be the return. But then if everybody wants it, I don't know, in front of the post office, because there's already one there, um, you know, then how do you determine who gets dibs and, you know, that kind of thing, if we've got a policy to fall back on, I think it'll be a lot easier. And I don't know if in policy, and that would be a council decision really, if we give preference to local people. I kind of think we would, but. But, but then we almost have to come up with criteria too, because is it somebody rural who, who wants to contribute as much to the town as the town people do? And is there, like?
A community person, I guess.
If, if they've been committed to the community or lived here for ten years, or seventy-five years, like, is there a preference given either way? And I don't say that there should be, I just think that there should be something that staff can fall back on and say, this is a policy.
Yeah, I agree, and, and sometimes what happens to you is you can include the, um, the school area that comes, which includes the rural area, and that kind of is defining.
Well, what we've often used for a definition i- is the, um, the recreation area, because that encompasses part of the rural community. And I mean, for the arena, they were, um, involved in that, the community hall, they were involved in that, like, it's, you know, you really have to think about the content side of town as well. Anyway, all right, I was kind of, I just thought of that today, because there was a bench, and I saw somebody's name on there, and I didn't recognize the name. And so then I kind of did a little bit of a Google search, if the name is what, what comes up, like, the person has nothing that I can find that has to do with Crossfield. Kind of like, and not to say that are good, bad, or different, but I just thought, I wonder if we have a policy, so that was the reason for my question. Okay. Pardon me? I will make a motion that administration work on a memorial bench policy, and, um, with, with thought to, uh, criteria for who qualifies and where they go, and, um, sorry, what? Yeah, rules, regulations.
Guidelines and what the test is.
Yeah, and if, um, what, how long do you think that would take next meeting, two meetings?
Can we do it beginning of December, is the law this week?
Sure, yeah, so I can bring back to that meeting, uh, and that's my motion, on our favor? Okay, that's curious. Hey, everybody, your price?
I have nothing to report, except for my grandmother passed away, and her estate was just set, and my aunt just sent me a check. And it says, please use this to remember something about your grandparents, and the way we're talking. And I wanted to find out about a bench, and I don't know where it went, so he just said everything, but there's a lot of people that, blah, 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 that needs to know about the society of creativity and our new Main Street. And can we have, like, a little saying about them too, or that we can say so-and-so's name, and then she was a mechanic in nineteen forty, and that's why I'm a mechanic now, and she's truly incredible. Okay, good. Or something, or something falls here.
And you can, and I can realize that, so I didn't, that's, that's kind of interesting, it was a lot of.
It's, it's just, it just came up on Sunday, so.
But you know what, then, if, and this is a thought, um, if you were to do that, then I would put on, on the plaque that you purchased a bench in your memorial to your grandma, kind of thing, so that you're.
She's always rented out here, she never lived up here, she owns a van, so she knows, so be a bank.
But that would be the tie, you can basically add your name.
She got her license in nineteen forty, and I didn't know that, after she passed, she hid it in her way. So my auntie sent me this, that's, she had her mechanic's license, that's a woman in nineteen forty.
Oh, wow.
So I decided it was cool, that's why I just don't really care, so.
So you're.
Well, yeah, she's really cool, but she, yeah, she's just, she had a lot of jobs on, but that's all I can say.
Okay, have some guesses.
I had my first meeting, uh, with the Rocky View Foundation last Wednesday, so lots of meetings right now are open, which was great for my intellect. It was pretty in-depth, it was, you know, I think three and a half hours long, and a lot to learn from, from the Rocky View Foundation. I guess the notes that I did take, Sandra, uh, who runs the Big Hill Springs, or, sorry, Big Hill, was that?
Yeah.
The copper, you know, Big Hill mansion. Okay. Uh, uh, her first, uh, comment was, they just got their, uh, first new resident in a year due to COVID. Uh, they've been doing the fourteen, day fourteen with, uh, the new resident, doing a lot of activities in the room, uh, iPad, uh, virtual tours of, of the lodge, you know, uh, they're hoping to have a total of sets worth, it's five or six, by the end of the year, coming to the lodge. They have some vacancies right now, they're sitting in, uh, they've got total of rooms is seventy-four, uh, and, uh, they've got sixty-four, for some reason, they've got nine and one discharged. So I don't know if they've got one room that's not working right now, but they've got nine vacant rooms in, in that lodge, and, and they've got a list, a waiting list to get in, but as COVID is, is, is putting a damper on that. So, I, I'm not sure how, I'm just gonna keep it at a fairly high level with, with the report on the Rocky View Foundation. They are just only letting them, the residents, come in two at a time, just for staff to accommodate the, the teens there. Yeah, oh, maybe six before Christmas in total. Uh, a little maintenance item with, uh, with that lodge, uh, weather inspection is done, they have, they have problems with the fire doors out there, and, uh, just due to the age of the building, I know that they are trying to work, they, they're working diligently to get a new lodge, but I'm sure that's gonna take some time. Uh, nothing to report from the Crossfield, because she wasn't, or, I'm, I'm assuming it was a she, but it could be he, I'm, I'm not sure who that was. From, sorry, there was a, it was Ellen Turner?
Yeah.
She's the manager there, uh, there is four vacancies in market rooms, and, see, I'm still trying to learn this, and three subsidized rooms
Oh, wow.
that are, are, uh, are vacant.
That must be due to COVID, because they usually have.
And, and, and could be, certainly, uh, she wasn't on to elaborate on her report. We, they have six full-time staff on leave, uh, so they're, they're, they're intervening to fill those positions temporarily. Activities, um, the Wrinkle Ranch. Yeah, their, residents have decided to produce a calendar called the Wrinkle Ranch.
It's cute.
It's like, it's a little funny. Uh, I know that, uh, one of our residents that dri- I believe, I'm hoping I'm connecting the right lodge there with, with the bus that they use, or.
Yeah.
They call it the Fun Bus?
That's copper.
No, well, it's, because Mr. Dean Grethers drives that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and, and he, he took them, he got them out about during the COVID, so.
Oh, okay.
Uh, little health and safety, the last O H N S meeting was held on the twenty-fourth of September. They also do these tabletop fire drills as well, uh, both lodges, we talked about them, where they, instead of going physically doing it, they just sit around a table and explain how to do it. I'm not sure how in-depth you want me to go with this report.
You can, you can give highlights, anything that might be, you know?
Yeah.
And, and if anybody has questions, like, of course, they can reach out to you.
Yeah, certainly, uh, I just got a couple more things I just wanted to get on here. Uh, we voted on the chairman, who is Alan, Vice Chair, and the I'm sorry, I'm just still trying to go through my notes here. Yeah, Penison?
Yeah.
And, and then Dad Hen. Uh, he is the I'm sorry. Dad Hen. Just have to, sorry.
He's the new reed, right?
He is the new reed for Rocky View. I just wanna try to give you an idea what he's gonna be doing now. Sorry, I'm gonna go through this whole thing, it was sixty-seven pages, forty-three pages long, sorry. Okay, well, anyways, the, uh, those are the two, oh, sorry, vice chairman was, uh, Dad Hen, and chairman was, uh, Alan, I said. And then the vice, or finance committee is myself. So. Did it go through some strategic planning for affordable housing? That's about it, uh. They are going to update their website for the end of year to reflect more affordable housing, so that'll be on the website. And that is it for myself, we haven't had a meeting on the development committee.
Okay, that's your next.
Thank you.
So I don't really have anything to report, but I did have an observation and maybe a question. I was, been driving up and down Main Street, obviously, because I go to Carmen's a lot, and I was just curious about the sidewalk on the east side. It seems a lot narrower than on the west side. And I was just kind of curious, is that the way we'd wanted it to be, like, should it be that narrow? Because it looks like only one person could really walk on there at a time.
We ran into, we, we frankly just didn't have a lot, by the way, there, it, it is narrow.
Yeah.
Um, that's the amount of space that was decided in the planning process, because, you know, those are very shallow lots. The, the property line is where they, it's, when we had enough road to have people drive on it, that's, that's really what was left.
But we still have, um, you know, the grassy areas and stuff that are there that we could expand on?
If, if that was in the choice council model, maybe we certainly do that.
That's kind of out of the factor.
I think we're gonna build it out as it gets developed, like, in the Boulevard parks, because I, you're right, you could expand it, but I think there that's sort of a thought at the time, because we didn't want to build it out, because we didn't know what people were gonna do.
Yeah, I'm just curious, because if we wanna really make, like, a walkable downtown, and only one person can go up that sidewalk, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
I haven't noticed, like, Kim, with you, I'm gonna, but now that you've piqued my interest, I will, I certainly do that.
So, yeah, I mean, I don't know if there's anything you can do, do about that, or if that's something one.
Maybe if we wanted to, I'd add to put some papers, extend up the side, that's a relatively big fix, if, if that's the way we want to do it. I mean, the thing is, we had such a little bit of room, and yeah, I, I remember this discussion with the designer, and if we had gone with a full width sidewalk, it's all copper, there's nothing aesthetic there. So the decision was made, okay, let's have some room to have some, some greenery and some night making. You know, it's, it's a narrow. You know, it's a narrow street in terms of what we had, because those lots were already so narrow going back to the railway. You know, if we wanna give up some green to get some sidewalk, that's absolutely something we can do.
Yeah, anyway, it's, I don't know if it's something that we would have to do right away, we could even wait a year and see how people use it and what happens, but I was just curious.
I mean, kind of the game plan was to make the west side the big wide, people conforming area, because frankly, there's not much on the east side right now.
Not yet.
Not yet, I love the optimism.
Okay, that's all. Thank you. Councilor Gassus.
I'm trying to set up a meeting with Paul from Rocky view HandiBus for their regular meeting, which is usually the third Thursday of every month. I'm gonna ask him for information and hopefully bring back the council so we can run it up a look at it, gather some questions. Then I get really concerned about it, then I can go back to them and try and figure out the puzzle they created. So I will keep everyone in touch with that. I also just wanted to bring something up to be aware of. See, Carmen is doing a Movember, the Movestation of November thing, and I don't think he's donating the money specifically to prostate cancer. I think you might be able to choose, but he's gonna match all the donations, so it's a really good thing to do. I mean, even a dollar, they'll take. So, and it's going until December twelfth, so we've got over a month to support that. I think it's a great thing to do, and cheers to Carmen for that. And that's it.
Okay, and you touched on one thing that I want to bring up. And going back through my notes through Rocky view HandiBus, Paul was gonna send out letters for increases. And he was gonna do that last year, he never got them out, and then with COVID this year, I was incorrect, there is not a request for an increase this year. So having said that, I still think it's of value to have him come and present, because in the paper, and Rocky view County gave him a grant of three hundred thousand five hundred dollars, and in the paper it said they gave him the same grant last year. And I don't remember that amount being discussed, so make that one of your questions as to what they use that grant money for.
Okay.
Because I want to know that, because that's a substantial amount. So we'll start getting to Carmen, start getting to present, so.
Mayor Fenton?
Yes.
I do have, and I don't know where to, I guess, put it into just some of the, some of the comments from some residents that had approached me.
Okay.
Where do we put that into the agenda?
You would put that in under your business arising.
Okay, so I did use, do I have time to?
Sure, yeah, okay.
So I did have a couple of concerned residents that have children in the minor hockey system. And they are having some issues with the amount of parents being able to watch games in the arena. It seems like there's not very many, because they go to different centers to watch their children play. And the consistency is not quite there between center to center, and I can appreciate that because of size of buildings and how we. Are we able to, I don't know if council's able to look into this in a deeper form of these residents. I know that we're using administration to do that, that legwork to. But do we know what policies are set out right now for our arena?
We can ask that of Russ and Brian, they have, they have that whole piece that was set out from all the broadening of services regulations.
The standards or the way people are doing it varies enormously from municipality to municipality. There hasn't been a lot of consistency on that. A lot of the rural municipalities are being quite loose, they're pretty much letting, you know, business as usual. You get into Airbury or Calgary, it's like a massive lockdown.
I disagree with that.
Well, there's a lot of, anyway.
Because I personally see it, so I respectfully disagree with you on the complete lockdown. There is some roads down laid out, but we are, as parents, able to enjoy games, no matter, like wherever we have been so far.
What happened is we came up originally with a set of proposals, and we actually received some pushback from Minor Hockey. And we got, Brian got together and Russ got together with Minor Hockey, and there was kind of a negotiated settlement, for lack of a better word. Where everybody gave up a little bit, we backed off some of the rules in terms of letting parents in, you know, with their kids. And, you know, Minor Hockey signed off on what we're doing.
Okay, so would you say we gave up, are you saying council or administration?
Well, council was part of the discussion, we came to council, council gave us some bit of discretion and said, hey, can you loosen it up a little bit? And we came, I mean, Brian and Russ and Minor Hockey, they got together and they came up with a.
And that's the council told me.
That everybody felt to deliver.
So what do you want?
So it wasn't imposed.
I don't, I don't know yet. I like being as free.
But you know what, it may want hurt to have Russ and Brian in my hockey back again.
Well, that's what I'm thinking, is how is it going now? And is there, maybe is there something that we need to revisit or, as a group, and look at? And I think one thing that had come up as well is Minor Hockey was requesting the Lions Loft. And then they were told that they will only, the town will only rent to the Scouts. And I'm not sure why we're signaling out that, like. This is what I'm trying to wrap my head around, is it's a facility owned by the town, right? It's no different than the, than the community hall, where you've got a room where that you rent to multiple groups. And why are you taking a room like that and just saying, okay, it's only the Scouts? How many times, you know, there should be a very good reason why. So that Minor Hockey can rent that out to supplement some space. And I don't, I don't know those, maybe there's some very good answers to those questions, but.
Well, let's get that in because my first thought on that might be that the, it doesn't have the staff to clean the upstairs if they're up there. Don't say Minor Hockey can't do it because that was part of the offer was that they would do it. So let's have them back in and have a discussion and find out exactly why Scouts are the only ones up there.
Are we able to, how do we?
Let's have, let's have the matter mixed and have a council meeting.
Yeah, we'll bring everybody together. We did have a discussion with Minor Hockey, we came up with something.
But it doesn't mean that it doesn't change, like if they see it, if they see it, like you say, more open at other arenas and the rules change. And I mean, Calgary and Edmonton are the hotspots, but just outside city limits, they aren't, and so maybe, maybe there is something that we can take a look at again.
Like I've been to, I've only been to a couple arenas right now, but there, you know, the Rob Epsom and Airbury and Cochran. And I know that, I don't know for a fact that, but if I was to go into the Rob Epsom Arena. I believe that we actually have more seating in our arena versus their arena. Like, I've been in arenas all my life.
What about access and ingress, is there enough space?
Well, it's relatively the same, in, like, if you walk into Rob Epsom, it's like, you have it, it's all there, you know, to walk in, you can, it's.
So why don't you make motion that they, that we get them to the next council meeting and have that discussion?
Okay, I'll make that motion that we engage with Minor Hockey, I just across from Minor Hockey in RMAA. To come and join with.
Make a rule. Now, did you want to bring them to council and have council come up with the guidelines? Or do you want Russ and Brian to meet with them and see if there's some sort of.
I think we need to bring it to council.
Yes.
I think we need to bring it to council.
Okay, can I make a suggestion? Can Russ and Brian come and do a staff report to council just on what we're doing currently?
Okay.
And then we can jointly have a presentation by Minor Hockey to present their side and ask council for what they want or what we can do.
Yeah.
And then after that, we'll probably have to send Russ and Brian back to kind of figure it out.
Yeah.
Yeah, I hate to put all the work on them, but, you know, we have some new groups that.
It's for the kids.
For sure. They, I'm glad you bring that up about having Russ and Brian give reports, but as well, is there any concern with the community hall as well? Because I don't, you know, is there any report that needs to come from other assets in town?
Before we jump into that, let's vote on your motion.
Okay, very, very.
Okay, so I'm in favor of that motion. Okay, and that's carried. I know that in, under the administrative and operations update, Russ has some information on the community hall. And, you know, I mean, just based on the size of groups of people that can meet and be together. That kind of predetermines the availability of the community hall, so I think that's addressed in the report.
Okay.
Okay? And did you have anything?
And I would also say that anything that happens in there generally has to align with AHS regulations, so that's really the governing body.
Yeah, and that'll be a part of, part of the arena conversation too, so, yeah. Did you have anything else?
I, so maybe you mentioned something about heating sidewalks for the winter, but I don't think that would fly.
By Jim Meads next week.
I thought I'd.
Did you want the entire town heated?
I think just certain residents wanted their.
Yes.
Okay. Is this part of the same project where we put a dome roof?
Yeah, exactly.
Administrative and operations update, the reports are attached. Any questions, any highlights that you want to, and this is for information. Information, should you want to highlight, it's here.
No, just a couple of quick verbal updates on where we are with railway being caught a little bit of a break with some nice weather. All of the curbing is in, and is nicely curing in our beautiful twelve of twelve we're having for the next two days. The road will, the last two blocks will be paved on Friday, and railway is being back open for men to end on Monday. So the next time we get together, we will have a functional streak. We've got the overwhelming majority of the concrete in on the west side, there's a few little bits that still need to be done. We have another, they're forming today, forming tomorrow, forming Thursday, and then we're doing the final core of concrete on Thursday. We expect the bulk of the sidewalks to be done. There will be a few areas that we won't get to. The sidewalks along Banta Park, we're going to defer to next year because that's a major gateway entrance feature there. And we've looked at the long-term forecast, it's supposed to, we get two nice days, then it's supposed to be five cold days, then it's supposed to be ten nice, beautiful days. Just, I mean, it's exposed concrete work, and there's nowhere to seem to get it done, it's not functional.
So what are we gonna have on the, on the Banta Park side then? Is it just gonna be, like, are we gonna put actual?
Yeah, and we're, everything, we'll put some temporary sidewalks down here heated. I mean, everything will be buttoned up so it's safe and it's, you know, cleaned up and there's no hazards. We're hoping to get the bulk of the east side poured on Thursday. There's a couple minor glitches. You'll notice there's a piece of the sidewalk missing on the west side, just south of the Shell Station.
Yes.
Or not the Shell Station, the Airshow Station. There's a pole that's got a guy wire on it, that's right where we want to put the sidewalk. The pole is owned by Fortis, but the beam, the, the support structure is owned by Shaw. So we have to get a joint agreement with Shaw and Fortis to move.
So then we can move.
And guy wire appropriate, can you system. We've been working on that for over two months now, and we're, the right people, the two companies are talking to each other, and apparently it's gone to legal to be vetted. You can't make this stuff up. So we'll be fully functional. I mean, we started out well behind the eight wall this year. The ground fell a little later than it normally does, we lost about six weeks, or about three weeks due to rain at the beginning. So we started out seven weeks behind, we end up about two weeks behind. We'll be deferring some minor stuff to next year, but everything big, the water manings, the storm lines, the superlions. Everything underground is done, the roadway is done, the overwhelming bulk of the curb and gutter and the majority of the sidewalks will be done. If we look at the weather forecast and it looks good in our ten-day window of nice weather a week from now, it's legitimately a ten-day window of nice weather. We'll go back and do a little bit more. It's, it's a little bit, it's a little bit dicey, we want to be relatively confident about the weather. We can spend more money and do things like, you know, heating hoarding on concrete, keeping it warmed up. We'll kind of make the call, we're getting together next Tuesday and we're gonna have a bit of a discussion of, you know, the balance between getting it done a little earlier versus spending some more money to get it done now. We'll have a chat on that. But overall, I mean, we started out six weeks late, six, seven weeks late, I thought we were doomed, we came back and we pulled back a little ramp.
Okay.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So I'm just looking at the, you know, the report to council engineering and infrastructure of the top line railway avenue. Working with professional excavators and stat tech to finalize the design, what does that mean?
I'm sorry, what does it say?
That's really the thing we were talking about.
Oh, the.
Finalize.
And we're talking about railway street downtown revitalization, is what?
Yeah, what does that mean?
I think.
Oh, yeah, I think it means Mustafa's report.
Yeah, I think.
I think that probably an old line you forgot to take up.
I think so.
And then, is there any old line, like finalize the design and cash flow projections?
I think those just stick in there.
I think Mustafa was kind of a dasty and forgot to put some.
A lot of these, it's basically the existing information plus any updates that some.
Oh, okay, so, yeah, maybe.
Yeah, we already spit that up and just have them.
I think, yeah, there's, there's still, I mean, there's.
Some new information.
The minor things are still guiding the flux right now, but. And then, I guess, did we talk about any grant stuff that has come to light here?
I don't think there are any grant updates, are there?
Not at the moment.
Try and have a couple of things.
I mean, we're waiting on, we're expecting to hear back on the Swirl Text Grant kind of now. Like they sort of said, the first, first ten days of November, which is kind of now, we haven't heard anything. What else do we have with machinery? There's.
Did we ever hear back on any of the ones that we sent to the province? I mean, they sent us the letter basically saying there's no money.
But, yeah, what they, oh, you mean all of the ones we put in? Yeah, this was, give council a little bit of a background on that. Our MLA basically said, throw everything into municipal affairs, throw in your entire wish list, which we did. And then the province came back and they said, ah, here's your four hundred thousand dollars. So that's, that package was a lot smaller than we had been led to believe, let's put it that way. I mean, when we were talking with the province originally, they were talking about multiple billions going into a structure as a, as a jumpstart. And the total package ended up being five hundred million dollars, which is not nothing. You know, we're gratefully and happily to take our four hundred and one thousand dollars, but it is, it is less than we had been led to believe.
Right, okay.
I have a few questions observing. On the town hall, are we, we're gonna talk about that at all on this, on this report?
Again, this is just for information, like when we get into our budget, we'll see if we've got money to start up, what council decides for, if we do, we'll put it off for another year.
Administration's getting quotes from consultants for a needs assessment, assessment. Can you elaborate on that?
We actually already, that's already been done.
Okay.
Basically, we have some preliminary design work done, saying, you know, this is roughly the square footage. A lot of these guidelines are kind of shifting a little bit with the COVID matter. All the people who have the, the open workspace concept are rethinking the wisdom of that at this point.
Well, we found that out too, I mean, some of this was done before, and like you say, with some of the people that are able to work from home. Then for some of the staff, if they have a shared office, if they need to meet with the public. then for some of the staff, if they have a shared office, if they need to meet with the public, then today it's, you know, employee number three's office, and then next week it's employee number two's office, and and it's the same office. They just bring what they need, the public comes in, but they don't need, you know, their own office as such, so. That'll be a redesign.
I I I have one more question, and I don't see it on, or I guess I don't see it on here because it's not part of major projects. But on the land sale that was approved by council over the while before we, before the by-election, has that all been finalized?
Uh, no, they are, the prospective buyer is obviously not going to make a formal offer until they get appropriate financials from Rocky County. So they are in the Rocky County approval machinery?
See, the the motion that we made was that it was available for sale. It wasn't that.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, it's one of those.
If it's not, if it's not for sale, then that's it. And if it is for sale, then we can say that, yes, if you if you do everything else, it's for sale, you can buy it. But now they still have to go to Rocky County and do all that work.
Obviously, the buyer, the potential buyer isn't gonna wanna buy it till they know Rocky County's gonna let them build it, basically enough.
Gotcha.
So if they're, if they're in contact with them, there is a machinery in Rocky County.
So so that's where we're at. That's the stage of this, of the possible sale.
Yes.
It is, they are now in in Rocky's all high V hats.
Yes, because it's in Rocky.
Yes. But they they haven't even put an offer in yet. I repeat, please, they didn't put an offer in yet?
No, they haven't put an offer in yet because they don't know if they can build there.
Do we know what it's worth, I guess?
Uh, we we have the professional opinion of our conventionally accredited assessor, and the discussed value is is easily consistent with that.
Okay.
There's nothing in closed session for motions correspondents by your nothing. Gallery questions?
James?
Sorry, I was just gonna ask about the sidewalk.
Sorry, repeat.
Sidewalk.
I was just gonna ask about that wire, that's supporting the poll, but you already talked about it.
Yeah, and as soon as I've requested Prime Minister Kuro, who can can me ask the Secretary General of the U N to have a session with the security council, so will you? Get this resolved?
Moving right along.
It's, you can't make stuff like this up. We wanna move, we wanna move.
Yeah, that's that's why it's for information. Okay, so we'll see all the Christmas market. You get to have your pictures with the Grinch, and you get to have your picture with Santa and the reindeer.
Oh, sorry, I just, and I knew you brought it up, but I just wanna, there is no, uh, because I haven't phoned Mr. Karen yet about the Remembrance Day ceremony. There is no Remembrance Day ceremony being held at the hall. It is going to be a.
Virtual, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, I did, I did get that from Bob Rogers. I spoke to him, and, yeah.
Virtual wreath?
Yes. Anyway, that's it. Motion for adjournment. Okay, all favor?